... and green rice planting, planning, and nonprofit leadership. She's most recently assisted Bottotac County with special community development projects. In addition to her administrative roles, Ms. Lawrence has also served on the elected and appointed side of local government. First, as a planning commissioner, she served as a town council member and as mayor for the town of Ashland. Ms. Lawrence has two adult children and four grandchildren with another one due in February. When she's not spending time with her family, she is usually outside hiking, bicycling, kayaking, camping, or gardening. She loves participating in local community events, and she looks forward to meeting people as she walks throughout the town. So as you have heard, Ms. Lawrence brings quite an extensive experience to the town. We are very fortunate to have her join us, and her start date will be September twenty ninth. The mayor has already spoken about September twenty fifth at the Ice House Brewery. I do have the time on there as eight AM, that is eight AM for me, but everybody else, eight thirty. So come out and just listen to all of the wonderful things that are happening at the Dogren Naval Base, as well as Indian Head, and as the mayor mentioned, we will have a presentation from our economic development director, Charlotte Cole. It is hurricane season, and I do have an emergency preparedness plan drafted. However, I would like to coordinate with the county, and the county haven't completed their plan as yet. And so they are scheduled to complete their plan by the end of the month. So next month in October, I will come back and just provide updates for hurricane preparedness. That is always at the forefront of our minds, especially during this time of year. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Ruckti, who will provide a brief presentation on some of the consent order items that we have. And I just want you all to really pay attention because this will serve as good foundation for the discussion from Davenport as we move into the CIP prioritization discussions for the water and sewer funds.
So, as you can see on the first page, we started at thirty-five point seven million. We entered into the agreement for consent order with the UQ twenty-first, twenty-four, which required a comprehensive evaluation of the facility. The current adoption plan required the destination to the UQ by December thirty-first. We had all of those items. We selected bone engineering, sorry, next slide, two slides. Bone engineering was selected to be a comprehensive evaluation. Next slide. Here's a scale of where each fiscal year per their initial plan was going. Thirty-five point seven million dollars. As you can see, some of them were lower, some of them were higher. The very end is extremely high. Next slide, please. Here's the revised plan for the two million dollars. This has been through perilous negotiations with the UQ through this process to get this to where it is today. Next slide. Here's a comparison of the money that we originally asked for and where we are today. Next slide, please. Here is a comparison of all three, so you can see them all side by side, starting from the end to the beginning. Next slide, please. The consent order is binding agreement, mandatory. The original expectation was thirty-five million through fiscal thirty. The plan is now has to be completed by the end of fiscal year twenty-eight. For the revised plan, the priorities and the treatment plan, treatment plans. One point five million compensation, forty-six K, and I nine four hundred and eighty thousand. Also, it's to prove funding for this, these actions that need to be looked at. Next slide, please. Looking forward, the revised plan is reduced to two million dollars, although the consent order requirements, the thirty-five point seven million dollars is still all work that needs to be done and planned for throughout the future. Otherwise, we are going to end up in the exact same situation we currently are. As I'll have that one. The argument grant created with allocation to treat. Next slide. Some of these was awarded by point seven million in hard to fund grants. Grant administered by Virginia B two. The original focus was essential to interiority, equipment, and I nine and repairments. General super rehabilitation. Next slide, please. Why the change was needed, major deficiencies should have caused us to find things. We have outdated systems, we have multiple failures on other systems. And major repairs. So we will re-communicate to those specific items. Next slide, please. U eighteen twenty-five IDQ, IDQ modified issue allocation was done in conjunction with IDQ, adding the treatment plan and compensation rates. Rebudgeted to cover new priorities, but grant still remains with five point seven million dollars. Here are the money allocated to each item. You have the consent order, which is completed, the I nine WWTP and compensation. We still only have my own stuff. The items funded through the art grant are items like electrical assessment, the U P system that's outdated, the data that's been upgraded, the air issue pipe, the headworks, et cetera, so we can save. Next slide, please. Project schedules, central drainage area completed in twenty-four, I nine testing, compensation areas, and WWTP needed to be completed by October twenty-sixth. Benefits from the gift, we sustain within compliance, any improvements or increased liability of our plant, we reduce the risk of our violations, our test are now straight. And creates infrastructure. In closing, the art recovery is one point four million dollars for the consent order treatment plan. Art recovery is three hundred and twenty in I nine consent order work, must be completed by October twenty-sixth. We use four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for repairs needed outside of the consent. Next slide.
Okay, we're going to get more information on the Davenport report as well. Okay? And that presentation will be over, is that?
Yeah.
Alright, that's done. Did I go there?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening everyone. So my presentation is going to be a little short this month. We have a whole lot to talk on from all this study. Everything pretty far away from our plan. We were within permit limits on all of our test results, we're happy about that. Go ahead to the next slide. Very good. Gosh, so these test results, everything is with more than over what we add, everything's low. But one of the biggest things I want to highlight for this month is you've been hearing us talking about the supplemental carbon feed line that we were relocating down into the nitrate recycle line. What that's doing is giving supplemental carbon to feed the bacteria, give it the energy for, to make the conversion, to reduce the nitrates. Well, since that line has been installed in this block, we've gotten it from, you know, if you see at the bottom of the report here under clear forward page, our average was eight. And we've got it down to around three point five, three point six. So that's a significant decrease, our limit is zero. We still have a little ways to go, we have our repairs remaining. Chris just kind of touched on that, will get us back to your WQI F limit. And I want to kind of reiterate on the fact that you're still needing your general permit limit for phosphorus nitrates. What we are not needing is the WQI F grant requirement. And once we get that number down to level three, we'll be back in compliance with that limit. And that's definitely something that we're all excited about. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any question? Yeah, that's what I'm.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's for John or for Chris, but I mean, that's a huge difference between thirty, four, thirty-five. To me, I mean, I'm a little bit confused, but I don't think it's something to be done, but the DQ is, can they get the buck away, can we give them two million, or are they hanging out about until thirty-five million is done?
Yeah, I'll answer that, you know, so just kind of to answer all of them and to have a little bit more information to that, to make it a little more standard. Is the original, the original reason they asked for the comprehensive evaluation is to give the town a full reach, a good view of what the actual entire problem was at the plant. So what they then did is they removed the items from the consent order and from that report that only addressed the violations that you were currently in and gave you, you know, meaning sustainable compliance. And after the consent order is completed, once you're back in compliance and you met the two million dollar mark, what is left over to the thirty-five DQ is not going to necessarily oversee that, they're not going to enforce that. That is something that they want you to have, so you know what needs to happen there. And they're hoping that you're going to do what you have to to get those items prepared. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so does that mean that we're still going to keep providing guidance and make sure we don't get behind with that?
They, they will continue, they will continue to do their inspections and continue to monitor reports getting to them, but there will not be any, you know, oversight outside of that, nothing unusual that they don't think we do. So it really is just going to follow the town to make sure they stay within those requirements.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another question from the bottom to that. It's in the, when Bowman was doing his initial report, and that was extremely comprehensive. You know, it's like you could fix everything in the world, you know? We have been making a lot of progress in a lot of different areas throughout this process, this process has taken us years. And so I remember there was a part of, and it's like little green and red and yellow, you know? Chris, I really need to update that, because a lot of the answers we review again. You know, I know this is never part of the DQ, it'd probably be nice to see how many of those items that we have been progressively working on, whether they were part of the council or not, have checked off some of those comprehensive there needs from the Bowman report, like what corresponds and what, you know, and because the Bowman report is, it's not really friendly to someone who doesn't see what's hard. I've learned, it sounds like him and John all the time here, but.
You're doing good with constant.
Uh, but it's, it's, you know, it's been quite an education.
I can tell when you go over now, you know, you're a small person.
I go more work than I used to, that's for sure. But I still think like maybe just to the average person, to me, I'm having something in a kind of little board or a label or something like a one pager that's sort of said the Bowman report has all these things in a more digestible way, even if I don't understand every word on the thing. And maybe like, you know, this has been checked off and this is not, and, you know, something about that, but, yeah, does that make sense?
So would you like to see say forty-five or maybe your board or updated on where we all look at that list and just keep, you know, showing what kind of progress is being made, is that what you'd like?
I mean, before the end of the year, so maybe, you know, I know it's going to be some time, and I know it's still work on the top, but maybe I remember something that has that condensed down into a summary for us, now that we got this. We'll get that in the talk, we'll get our Chris, and first I know.
John and Chris to provide that before the end of the year.
That's right, you know, coming from the doctors that already have it gets updated. You know, just kind of helping clarify that much bigger report would be helpful for me in understanding because while the consent order is a legal order, I mean, this is litigation. You know, on the ground, it's very serious. So we're being, you know, obligated to a million by legal order. Right? And now we're obligated by the order of justice, thirty-five million, but we're in thirty-five million dollars, which is costly, right? So, you know, it's something for you to figure out, but which is what the DQ's expectation has, is how it will go ahead.
We can begin to work on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is, it's important that we recognize, first of all, congratulations to our town manager who had four seconds to employ Bowman. We were just a couple of days away from things being completely out of hand, if I remember this, this doctor, that correct? Me, literally days away. And you see the difference, two millions but in thirty-seven million. And we at least have a way to put our hands around a problem where it was just kind of out of control at this point. So not only do I want to congratulate the two of you, but point out that that's why it's important to have competent people to help us through our problems and not just to kind of flail away. So again, John, thank you for that, and Miss Tucker, thank you for your leadership.
Are there any questions with this one, or we're going to get more numbers here shortly? Okay, is that all for you?
That completes my monthly updates, yes.
Alright, I wanted to meet Ms. Warren. Mr. Tidbit from the Board Supervisors is out on town tonight, and so we'll see him next month. And nice to talk to him.
Welcome in the town council members and all of the present, uh, to my, uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. And we leave the class divided the sixth week of school. How time flies, seems like I will get a bit of school last week. First, I want to specifically congratulate to three students, Olivia Cook, Zachary Albert Nicholas, and Kim Cowell, the school board. Last week, we hold these three as years old to the school board. We're very excited about that, and they were bringing, well, they are not only student members who were attending and participating on the school board, they need to provide a student perspective and advocate for student needs. And I think that's an important, you know, given the wonderful experience also to see how government works and the decision-making process of school. Going to give a big shout out to all the wonderful elementary school students that received this to honor the month. We're very proud of them and continue to honor their excellent academic successes and also behavior. Glad to announce that last week and a half, we had a group of students from the STEM club attend them. The, uh, they all enjoyed attending the year, then the comic observatory at UBA. At night time, and they truly enjoyed that experience to be able to attend there when they're until midnight or something like that. And that's a wonderful future for those kids to, uh, to experience. I want to give a big shout out to Mrs. Gallagher, who's now doing the general assistant at the elementary school. This is the first time this has ever happened for one person to be voted as August employee of the month, but also she received the Golden Apple Award. They explain that the Golden, you know, the Golden Apple is an award that goes from one employee to the next. So it's, it's totally brilliant, I guess, uh, a reward for the next one. The employee sees exemplifying professionalism and going above and beyond. Then we hand it to the next employee, it goes from one employee to the next. They are rewarding each other for excellence as it goes to the collective board of the common month in that mix up. And that is saying award also happens at the high school. And I'm also excited to announce that we are staying with our teaching plan. One of our goals, which is to enhance, increase family engagement. And we saw the highest attendance at the, uh, that is who night that was held. I think we were probably above ninety percent, and that is something that's fantastic. If you're seeing ninety, ninety-six percent of all of our parents are coming to the school to engage in the school system as exactly what we're looking for. Now moving on to the high school, congratulating Mr. Cameron, the fourth year, and Mr. Zaza, who went above and beyond and remained teacher of the month, for their hard work and dedication to the students at the high school. Now, you'll probably have seen our video, it's, uh, it's natural attendance for every month. I, I didn't put on a video, I think that's my personal one, and it wasn't my best, but I'll do better next time. What I ask you is, uh, students and parents, please, what would allow us to develop a consistent and try and convince and support them into the success. We know in order for students to be successful, we need their behind in that seat, that action from school, you know? So please, uh, help us see. I'm also excited about that, and I'm going to leave us just on the school board. First time ever, the board last month approved CBPS Community Action Plan, which is pretty detailed. This is right now on our website, it will encourage the public community. Now, as such, our work communication has sustained our students, and that is more than the way it strengthens our community as a whole. So please, uh, try it out. And moving on to, uh, I have a couple of things. In terms of the, this, the town we have to share with the A D M, the United Center for Now, and we have to report the A D M at the end of the month. And A D M is for average daily membership, we got this call back, and I'm all for that. System was prepaid included, we are at five hundred and eighty-four. Without prepay, which what the state looks at, now prepay is five hundred and eighty-two. So we, we are pretty much at, what we projected in our budget at five fifty-five. Three had to be, it was kind of, we're close, so we're doing fairly well. Now finally, I do want to, before that, I do want to give you a quick update on the school tax situation. We had a chance to speak with the legal counsel last week at the school board conference session. And I want to say that, uh, that that much has changed in terms of an agent being assigned to a case. And that's what our legal counsel is waiting on, for an agent to be assigned to a case. So there's communication and dialogue in moving forward with this situation. Therefore, we're still waiting on that, on that part of it. Since this is an ongoing negotiation, for a legal counsel, it's best not to say too much or do too much in case it doesn't, uh, it doesn't really affect the outcome. But you will understand where they're coming from, or, or keep your policy moving along with that, uh, with other regards. Now, I do want to give a big shout out to the board members, school members, that every man, their commitment dedication. I have to say that every term from, uh, from B D O E, we've had a lot of changes coming down. And they have, uh, suffered with it, and they have been behind the process and trusting the process. And we're doing a lot better, and, and, I had a woman surrounding, I guess, I had a boss there, learning their school system. And I'm proud to say that Corning Beach is doing very well in that regard. So thank you so much for, for that support. And that's a reminder, please, if you have any questions, any concerns, anything that all around the school, or the school system itself, please direct your questions or concerns to any of the school board members or myself, who will be happy to answer any questions for you. And I encourage me to attend our school board meetings. It's every second Wednesday of each month at six P M here in Minnesota, Cleveland. And there's a lot of information that goes out, and it will be very comforting for anyone who wants to know a lot more about the school system. With that said, one more thing, in terms of capital improvement, we are still in the process of, uh, of, uh, cost analysis and cost efficiency, we have a meeting tomorrow to finalize that for the front entrance of the high school, including main office. And also, we are working with the town manager, and she has been so kind to help us out to work with a surveyor to get a school board parking lot done, and we're waiting on those items to get moving. So I want to thank her and, and I think, Darla?
Darla.
Darla, yeah. I just met Darla, we gave her a board recently. So thank you for helping us out in that regard. And that is all I have for you, but you have any questions for me?
Any questions about that? Thank you very much. Alright, next up, part two of the continued presentations from last month by Davenport Financial Center. Do you have a list for us?
We have more goals.
Okay.
All you two.
And I hope that all of the rest of the lobby passes out. And I hope that all of the rest of the lobby passes out.
All right, great. Um, again, my name is Ted Cole, David Portman. As the mayor said, this is part two. We, uh, presented on the general fund at the last meeting. This is a presentation set up specifically for water and sewer funds. And, um, there's a lot of things in the appendix, which I'm not going to go through, but it'd be helpful resource going forward. And I think at the last meeting, we had discussed the desires to come back together in the local board session. For that, for these presentations, and I would also dig into the details a bit more in many ways. And I would really do the same, so I would expect we might come to the same conclusion here tonight. This is a starting point for the discussion. And we have looked at this, um, there are page numbers in the bottom right corner. Um, go to page two, um, we've broken this into two chapters. We're gonna address the, uh, the water fund and sewer fund separately. And within each of those conversations, we're going to cover the existing debt, the debt that's in place today for both funds. Um, the historical financial results and trends. I T for each of them, and then a forward-looking, what we call pro forma analysis. Uh, page three, just talk for a moment, very briefly about the, um, credit factors related to utilities. Uh, they're different than the general fund, right? We talked a little bit about that at the last meeting with the general fund. We talked about, uh, your debt levels, we talked about your fund balance levels, um, your economy, things of that nature. For utilities, um, and this is a snapshot from Moody's, um, not that the town would ever need to get your utility system rated, possibly. But in Virginia, you've got a lot of other good funding sources between the Virginia Resources Authority, which is a state agency set up in particular to help fund, uh, local government utility needs. That's a, uh, that would probably be our base case, but also a number of other programs, uh, low interest loans, revolving loans, uh, things of that nature. But big picture, when, when an, an outside entity, whether it's a bank or somebody like V R A N, they're gonna look at the system characteristics, right? Your size, the, the retail, uh, residential mix versus commercial mix of your customers. Um, those are things that take a little bit longer, um, you know, to change, remove the needle on your, 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 your service area. Uh, that's about thirty percent of the rating. And again, that's not something you all can control within any given budget or, uh, in the short term. Those are really longer-term initiatives to grow the system, find a, a balance between different customer types, grow the economy. Uh, financial strength, so how do you, how does the system perform? Revenues versus expenditures, uh, reserve levels, that's about forty percent of the rating. You do have the ability to manage those things a little bit better, budget to budget, as you're making financial decisions about issuing debt or, or adjusting rates. Management, that's twenty percent of the rating. Talking about things like planning, procedures, compliance with regulatory requirements, things of that nature. Um, and then finally, um, your, your, your debt and legal provisions. That is when you go to issue debt, sort of the, the strength of those financing documents. All right, so we're gonna get into the detail here. Water fund is first. You look on page five, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but this is probably within the water discussion, the most important page. And what I would suggest we do for starters is look under the twenty twenty-four audited column. We have audited financial results for the water fund from twenty twenty to twenty-four across the top. We have a twenty twenty-five amended budget and a twenty-six amended budget. But I, I'd like to go down the twenty twenty-four line, numbers. And as you go down, you'll see there are line numbers. And the first section we get to is operating revenue, line four. It was about a million eighty-seven thousand. You can look to the left or look to the right to see what that number has been in prior fiscal years or in the bottom, right? So that's operating revenue, charges for services. You then go down to line nine, this is non-operating revenue, connection and reconnection fees and availability fees. About a hundred and forty-five thousand. You can see what that's been historically and on a forward look. Total revenue, so it's operating and non-operating. For fiscal twenty-four, it was a million two thirty-two, down a little bit from the prior couple of years. Twenty-five and twenty-six budget are expected to be higher, operating revenue. Noteworthy on line four, your, your operating revenues, that green box over on the right, the six-year C A G R, compound annual growth rate. That revenue has grown on average two percent per year, right? It's getting from the beginning point to the endpoint of this look, the revenues, the operating revenues have grown at two percent per year. You can go down to line thirteen, this is your operating expenditures. It does not include your debt service, it doesn't include depreciation, this is just true money that gets spent, salaries, uh, utilities, chemicals, things of that nature. You can see that your operating expenditures in twenty-four was seven hundred and twelve thousand. You can look back at what they were in prior years, as well as budgeted years. And over this six-year horizon, the compound annual growth rate on operating expenditures is over thirteen percent. So you could immediately see what's happening here, operation, before we even talk about debt or new projects going forward, is we've got operating expenditures that are growing much more quickly than operating revenue. And you're going to see in the water fund, that's gonna be the primary driver of some decisions you all need to make going forward to make sure this fund is sustainable on its own, right? Ideally, the water fund stays on, it stands on its own, there's no support from the sewer fund, there's no support from the general. It's a self-supporting fund. So as you go down twenty twenty-four column, we've established that your total revenues on line eleven were a million two. Your operating expenses were seven hundred thousand, and that gets us to line fifteen, which is an important number. And that's called net revenue, available for debt service. It's five hundred and twenty thousand, simply revenues over expenditures. You gotta pay those expenditures first, right? Salaries, utilities, chemicals, and now you gotta pay debt. You got five hundred and twenty thousand dollars to pay that debt, and directly below that, your debt was four hundred and eighteen thousand. So you covered your debt by one time or slightly more, but you only had about a hundred thousand dollars left over on line nineteen, which is net revenue after debt service. And you can look on line nineteen and look to the left, you had years where that net revenue after debt service was two hundred plus, four hundred plus. And as you look to the right, the net revenue after debt service is, is, is pretty tight, forty thousand, thirty-seven thousand. What matters, as, as revenues are not growing as fast as expenditures, and even if your current debt is flat, the margins are getting tighter and tighter before we even talk about new projects and new debt. Okay? And that's really the trend that we're seeing. When you look down at line twenty-nine, that, that green bar, that's telling us what's called your debt service coverage. How many times do your net revenues pay for your debt service? One times means you've got a dollar available for every dollar of debt service. That would be one times coverage you're perfectly matched. Ideally, you're operating at one point two-five or one point five, meaning for every dollar of debt service you have to pay, you can demonstrate you've got a dollar twenty-five or a dollar fifty available. That is where we want to get to as we start thinking about making sure the water fund can stand on its own financially and be in a place where it can go out to the market and reasonably borrow the money for new projects. That would be the expectation of the market. And you can see historically on line twenty-nine, you have had very strong coverage in prior years. It's gotten tighter and it's expected to get a little bit tighter. So I, I said this is an important page, because you're gonna see the water fund has a pretty modest capital plan. There's not a lot of capital needs in the water fund, mostly capital's in the sewer fund. But you're going to see in the water fund, we are projecting the need for rate increases or revenue growth, however you wanna call it. We've got to grow revenues, and it's primarily, almost entirely driven by this, uh, disconnect between expenditure growth and revenue. Okay?
That's why I just wanted to, I'm very, I'm sorry, and then, um, the twenty point four, uh, operating revenue line, I'm gonna think of the, 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 that is because we, uh, we allocated the rate change, so we actually.
Yeah, we reallocated five percent of the sewer.
Right, which means we're really, for this fund, just talking about water and this part, I think most people always just look at the other. But, um, the rate actually decreased for water. So that would be the reflection of how you're getting the difference from twenty-three to twenty-four.
Yeah, I think that, that is part of it, right? That, that, it sounds like in twenty-four, there was a reallocation from water to sewer for charges for services. But we also saw on line thirteen, operating expenses went up by, you know, thirty, forty thousand, right? Um, and, and, and I do think, we, we've looked at water separately and sewer separately. I do think it's also fair to look at them on a combined basis. But before we do that, we want to make sure we have a good understanding of the individual pieces. Are, are they operating from a position of financial strength, or is there some vulnerability? And, and so you have, you have, uh, you have met all the metrics that you need to meet historically. Don't get me wrong, and you're projected to do that in twenty-five and twenty-six. It's just that the margins are getting tighter when you look at revenues over expenses year by year. Okay? Page six, uh, that's a journey graphically, what does this explain, uh, between your debt service coverage and your cash in the system? Uh, I suggest you go, page seven, this is the water system debt existing debt. There's about, in the bottom last quarter, three point six million dollars of debt outstanding. Uh, both of those bonds were issued in twenty twenty-one. You can see in the chart in the upper left, by fiscal year, starting with twenty-six, the principal and interest as two. So in twenty twenty-six, you can actually see it a little bit clearer on the right-hand side. The total debt service due on the water fund is about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. It's stepping down in twenty-seventh, so that's the next budget you're going into, you're gonna have a, about a forty thousand dollar drop in your debt service. And then it's relatively flat for the next decade or so, right? So there's not a big drop coming in the water system debt, where you can neatly fit in some new piece of debt, right? The, the annual payment for debt, twenty-seven and to thirty-five, it's gonna be pretty flat at about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And you're covering that under your current budget. Okay? Not till you get out to twenty thirty-six and twenty thirty-seven, do we see a big decline in debt service. Page eight, as I said, the water fund capital program that we've gotten from S A F and have talked through is pretty modest. Um, in total, it's about two hundred thousand dollars between fiscal twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, I think that's something that you all will be revisiting, and good practice is to revisit that each year, right? And, uh, the first year drops off and you add another year. But, um, pretty modest dollars in the grand scheme of things. The priority project is the water, water meters, uh, that's been funded through ARCA funds. Uh, Denison well abandoned bit is a twenty twenty-seven project. But big picture, no, no expectation that you would need to issue any debt for the water fund. Uh, but as you revisit your capital plan and look out to the future, there may be projects that come up. But the current version, no debt expected and, uh, unfunded at this point, is just that Denison well. That's an F Y twenty-seven project. Okay? So the modeling for water, page nine, is, I'm gonna tell you how we would go about it, because there's, there's not a lot of modeling type of C I P. So when we set up our pro forma, we had audited financials for twenty-four, we had amended budget for twenty-five, the adopted budget for twenty-six, and the C I P. Uh, the third bullet, these are sort of the, the metrics that we're targeting to fall for in any given year, that we can demonstrate that our debt service coverage is at least one point two-five times. That is, for every dollar of debt service, we have a dollar twenty-five available. And the reason that's important is when the time go, comes to go out and borrow money, lenders wanna know that you've got capacity within your structure to take on new debt. But they also wanna know that if, in any given year, there's an unexpected increase in expenses or a decrease in revenue, and things like weather can impact that, right? A wet, a wet year, a dry year, and so that, that debt service coverage just gives a little bit of cushion so that if expenses pop up or revenues come down, you only gotta pay your debt service once. But having that coverage of a, a one point two-five or even higher demonstrates to lenders, hey, they've got some cushion baked into their age structure for something unexpected and can still make the pay. So that's why we target that coverage factor and unrestricted cash, let's call it fund balance, in the water fund that's equal to at least fifty percent of the operating budget. For cash flow purposes, for unexpected capital needs that come up, maybe you just start a project and you need to pay for an engineer to do some work before you can borrow money, you need some critical mass of dollars to cash flow the system. That's, those are the two main targets, coverage of one point two-five, cash of fifty percent of budget. And what we solve for is what kind of growth and revenue do we need to make all of that work, right? What kind of offline revenue growth do we need? And, and revenue is grown by, you know, this is basic, but revenue is grown by new customers, increased flow, or rate adjustments, right? Some combination of all of those things will grow your revenues. And that's what we're gonna solve for, is revenue growth, not necessarily rate increases, although you can say, look, if we need ten percent revenue growth and we have no new customers, we gotta raise rates ten percent, right? But there may be some new customer growth that can help you, maybe there's some things you can do to manage expenditures. But we're gonna talk about the need for growth in charges for services. Um, page ten, a few more pro forma assumptions, um, just talk a little bit about the expectations going forward, a hundred thousand per year, uh, the ARCA funds for the water meter, uh, expense growth. Um, again, remember what we've seen in that expense growth, historically thirteen percent on average annual expense growth. We're building into this ten percent. We're building into this ten percent growth in expenses now. If that could be mitigated and managed to a lower growth level, that's only going to help. That's only going to help our projections. The CIP, again, in this case is very modest, it's almost a non-issue for the water fund. And if we were issuing debt, we would use a five percent rate over a twenty-five-year term. If you get a lower rate to a program, all the better. If you can go out thirty years or even longer, all the better for cash flow. But there's no debt running through this model. So the takeaway is on page eleven. And what you're going to see is three scenarios, the most important, which is the top end. Scenario one, where the only thing we're measuring is the operations. We're not looking at any capital here. And in order to meet our debt coverage of one point two-five every year and maintain cash of at least fifty percent, you know, we're looking at those revenue growth needs under column D, thirteen point eight, seven, seven, eight. Over the four-year period, that's about thirty-seven percent. Entirely driven by that that higher growth rate in operating expenses versus revenue and trying to sort of widen that that financial resolve back to where it's been historically. So before we are even funding the capital program, we're looking at rate increases or revenue growth in that order of magnitude to get the operations back to a a sound footing for the for the for the future. Okay, now that 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 could, that gap could be, you could get there not only by growing up revenues, but maybe there's an opportunity to manage expenses. That that's, I think, for the next conversation and certainly going into your next budget. Okay? All right, so we'll go to sewer. Very similar setup. Page thirteen, I suggest we go back to twenty-two. What we're going to see is we've got operating revenues of two, twenty-two, or two million seven ninety-two, that's line four. Over the six-year horizon, you can look to the left historically, what has it been? To the right, what is it under the budget? Over this, over this six-year horizon, the compound annual growth rate's been about nine point seven percent, right? So higher growth rate in the sewer revenues than we've seen in the water revenues. You do have some non-operating revenue, availability, connection and reconnection fees. In twenty-four, it's about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Budgeted a little bit higher, you know, twice as much in twenty-five. The budget for those non-operating revenues was back down a bit to twenty-six. Operating, total revenue on line eleven, sorry, you can see what those are, two point nine million in twenty-twenty-four. Operating expenses in twenty-four, line thirteen was about two and a half million. That the compound annual growth rate on expenditures in the sewer fund's been almost twenty percent. So similar to water, right? Expenditure growth is outpacing or has been outpacing revenue growth. So when you look at twenty-four, you had operating expenses of two-five. Line fifteen, net revenue available for debt service. So revenues over expenditures left is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Historically, that's been in some years, almost a million. Projected to be a little bit higher in twenty-five, pretty much flat in twenty-six. Is the revenue, net revenue available for debt service. We have debt service of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand on line seventeen. So our revenue available after debt service in twenty-four is about thirty-eight thousand. Again, balanced, right? You covered your debt, you covered all of your operating expenses. But the margin there on line nineteen is is getting tighter. And you can look to the left and see where that number has been historically and where it's expected to be going forward through the to the twenty-six budget, still pretty tight. More capital going on in the sewer fund, that's where we're showing capital outlay on line twenty-two. If you're borrowing money or you get grants, that's shown on line twenty-three, amount of money going out and money coming in for capital purposes. And you get down to the coverage, right? And you can see in twenty-four, we covered our debt one point one times. So we are over one, but we're not quite where we want to be on that one point two-five times. Historically, looking back over time, you've been in the two point three, two and a half times coverage. And I think that's where we would like to try to get back to something closer to that. And then at the very bottom, you can also see reserves have sort of ebbed and flowed a little bit. And you finished twenty-twenty-four with reserves equal to about eighty-three percent of budget. So in pretty good shape in reserves in the sewer fund. Okay? Page fourteen, just graphically, the coverage and the liquidity trends. Page fifteen is sewer debt. We've got about four million dollars outstanding. You can see it's a bit more front look, right? And that is actually going to play in your favor because the sewer fund has more capital needs than the water fund. And you can see that our payments are around three hundred and fifty thousand now through twenty-twenty-nine, and they're going to step down, not huge dollars, but the step down will help, right? As we're talking about funding capital, whether you cash fund it or you debt fund it, that drop in the existing debt is certainly going to be helpful. And we know there's more capital needs in this fund in the sewer, excuse me, the water. And this debt also goes out much longer, goes out to twenty-fifty-three. Okay? This is just existing debt, no new debt. The CIP on on sixteen, this, you know, it tracks what's been presented this evening, the consent, the reduced consent order dollars, plus a few other projects like the generator upgrade. I'm looking at the top of this table, crew vehicles, point area sewer replacement, meadows, block area sewer replacement. You see all the different consent order components. You will see a column for each project that says eligible for DEQ reimbursement. And I may, I may call on on Tyler Natasha to just make sure I present this properly. It's yes or no, and and my understanding there is there are some funds that are still available to you all through the ARPA. And if you were to spend some of the money you have on these projects that have, yes, they're eligible for reimbursement, you can get reimbursed from additional ARPA funds that have not yet been allocated to the tank. So you've got funding available for some of these projects through additional ARPA funds that you've not yet collected. You've got to spend money to get them done, but they're eligible for reimbursement once they're completed. Is that a fair summary? Okay? So the total CIP as it's modeled is is still relatively modest, right? Two point eight million. We stopped short of addressing that larger thirty-some million. We felt like in the nineteen, let's look at this more limited capital program. But sort of tagging on to the conversation earlier, we know there are significant other projects out there. While they may not be part of the consent order, they're they're recommended, they're needed, whatever the right term is. But the question will be, when should those be done? What is the updated estimated cost of those projects? And that's where we want to go with this, is not only funding this universe of projects that are all kind of the must-has, but how do we want to build on this and slot in these other projects by year and build a more comprehensive plan for you all to be able to look at? Thank you for that. Well, page seventeen and eighteen are very similar to what I call covered on the waters. Just the way as you went about and following things, we have the same baseline information that we're using twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six audits for budgets. We're still solving to to meet our coverage of one point two-five times and at least fifty percent of the budget in reserves. And we're solving for what kind of growth in revenues or charges for services do we need to make this work? Page eighteen, similar, we talked a little bit about the revenue assumptions. Likewise for expense growth, operating expense growth, we're growing it at ten percent. Remember, the historical growth rate for operating expenses has been, has been on the high side. So we we wanted to make sure that we were still growing expenses at that level so as not to underestimate operating expenses. And then we've run the same scenario, what does this look like? What kind of revenue growth do we need to just cover operating expenses? And then what additional revenue do we need to cover our CIP? And you'll see that on page nineteen, and you'll note up in the top, one more slide. Thank you. Up in the top in the header there, it says no DEQ reimbursement funds utilized. So we're we're saying, let's, let's fund those projects. And even though some of them are eligible for reimbursement, we're not assuming that in this case. What you're going to see, similar to water, is that scenario one, which is just the operations, requires, you know, four years is the horizon that we're looking at here. Revenue growth of thirteen, twelve, twelve, around, you know, seven to eight percent revenue to make all of this work, to hit those targets of coverage and cash. And then what we've done on scenario two and scenario three is we've layered in the priority and non-priority capital. And you can see the revenue growth is incrementally a bit higher, right? Because we're not only just covering the operations, but we're bringing in that two point eight million dollar CIP, not the bigger one, not the third million. Haven't touched that one yet, but operational needed growth versus capital needed growth. And when you flip the page to twenty, this is the last slide. The scenario one is the impact. But we have a think we get reimbursement from DEQ for those projects that are eligible. And you'll notice in scenario two and three, the impacts are a little less than they were on the prior page. So that reimbursement for a handful of those projects from additional ARPA funds is going to be obviously incrementally helpful. But again, for the CIP that this report is analyzing, the vast majority of revenue growth is being driven by the operations. We go on to talk a little bit about funding options, some observations, much of which we've covered. Again, this was intended to be a starting point. And as you all have an opportunity to digest this, and I know this is, this is new information, but I think that's why we discussed a follow-up work session at some point. Maybe digested this a little more and start to think about what else you would like to see to be prepared to make additional decisions, whether it's about capital projects, rates and charges, or other utility decisions. Any questions?
I just wanted to point out a couple of factors in this, in our works. Actually, I am both aware in sewer fund, when you look at the historical budget handles, that would be just the suicide. The same price of, of the, um, more support. I just want to point out that two aspects, um, three aspects that are probably useful as we try to forecast or consider forecasting. One of them, I know there is a data uptick in connection and reconnection fees, starting and coming from the one. That was a council policy, we adjusted fee rates, connection fee rates. We were the lowest in the entire region, basically, that ended up in many years. We kind of came to the performance today. They have not, the actual connection rates have not been readjusted since that time. But also, along with adjusting the rates for the connection, reconnection fees, we had the dots in development happen. And so there was the biggest influx in economic development and new property coming into both on the operating revenue side, ultimately becoming built, right? But the initial fees of building right there have a major uptick because that development happened. Those fees were paid starting in twenty-twenty-one. Even though the deal started in twenty-nineteen, it didn't actually end up in construction until that time. So I just want to say there might be a little bit of an anomaly of projected numbers because I don't know if, you know, at what point are we going to see that level of economic explosion that that caused. And you think it's significant enough. In fact, it makes me a little bit concerned about the projection that we have in connection, reconnection fees for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six. And I know we have been a little low, we have been, that already, I'd say, a little bit. Let's see where that comes out in the August, uh, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. And so I think they may be over projected due to the fact that that trend was not something that can be sustainable because those were major pieces of property that put multiple connections in place with multifamily, that power. I mean, it's been multiple commercial connections as well. Connection connect was much more expensive than, uh, taking that home connection or family connect. The other part is the policy that started in twenty twenty-four, it was not in twenty twenty-three, it's already in place in twenty-four, which is the availability fees, and that is reflected as well on water. That is the policy I'll do it. So that, right, will continue from that point on and hadn't been in your project. However, with the documents being, there were, you know, we would have to also protect it. We're going to grow economically with new connections, not redevelopment of existing, but brand connections. And you were around the family, so obviously it wasn't going to make the property available. So we just kind of, has that key of warning a little bit about these numbers and the predictions you make in the next five years. That a little bit is concerned because we would expect, now you can tell that twenty twenty-six is sort of auto-collected, right? So twenty twenty-five, maybe we, you know, because the trend was there, you know, you were tracking the trend, it was there. But then it's realized, some of those were, it was sort of going to, you know, come of economic. It would kind of come back in reality, I think, for the top six, about the budget, which is good. But if you might quit off a little bit, the statistics as we protect, right? And the other part is the DEQ reimbursement funds from the central drainage project are not reflected in these numbers, but I can tell they would be transferred into the unrestricted cash balance of, I imagine, the sewer fund. I think right now they are sitting back in ARPA. Yeah, they haven't been even that on that. And so right now, that's not reflected, but how will we help assume? And that is two point three million. That will influence into the unrestricted cash balance. I will assume of sewer, you know, council will have the determination of how allocate that money. But since it was sewer money, I think it has been general policy knowledge that we would continue to use in the sewer. We'll have that debate on that one soon, probably. And so I just say those couple of things because as we look at the need for financing data, I think projected of that, we are over our policy in unrestricted funds. And so we would probably not borrow, you know, in addition to the, the slide with the DEQ reimbursement funds utilized. So like that, right? So also, though, in addition to that, we would, what would we be using from the cash balance, right? When we have swell level policy levels in cash balance. So that may also help that. It does not change scenario one, which I do understand your point about. And so scenario one is that the real, and that is going to happen no matter how we might test these specific projects. You know, I know the revenues of the sewer plan and sewer operations, including like every time something breaks at night, overtime, manpower, the urgency needs of that have been ongoing for some time now. And part of the sticker shock that's happening is as the big leagues have come online, we now have to pay them and pay them. now have to pay them and pay them, they operate and work. I think we had all LED lights over there because the utility bills, the electric bill was so high and they were like, Robert, we have pumps that work now and everyone went to them. So fair enough, that would use more electricity, also the lights are LED. So, you know, I just say there's a couple of things because it doesn't change scenario one, but it may change how we view the work session, scenario two and three, as we consider that.
Agreed, yep.
And the last point I have is, I do not know that current financial policies that we adopted, which have been excellent, that have been followed, is reflected in the position we're in right now, both in the general fund and here. But should we adopt also into that financial plan this 1.25 debt coverage ratio threshold? Because as we know, utility systems are going to break again, maintenance, while the water system is great right now, we did 2021, we repacked all the water tanks, done because the water tower looked atrocious, like disgusting, we would never take a picture of it. And now everybody photographing all the time, it's like amazing. Well, that was not to be pretty, that was a massive water rehabilitation program from the one at Robinville to the main tower at the water power field and the tower over at Waste Water Three, I think. And all three of those are now contractually on maintenance agreements, which they were not, which is why that got like that. So we're in a good place now on water, but that's why we have to really go and vet, right? And we may be in a good place for another ten years, I know, I mean, people say whatever, but we don't, that will come back around at one point too. So should we be adopting this 1.25 average overall policy? So if we do rate setting, one of the things I think, you know, worldwide globally is rate setting is around whether or not, you know, it's like political or something. And like this is being drinking water in the standard period of river, like this is our natural health, safety and sanitation, this is a nonprofit fund, we do not get to make money off of utility funds, it's illegal and state must do that. They must pay for themselves, they must pay for that, and we must probably all maintain that while we have nothing to sell. So they shouldn't be political, they should be, here's the need, it's a, you know, it's a nonprofit business and it has to pay for itself and has to be paid. So we should be having policies in place that the town, that the people in this town are attentive, you know, for that situation occurring, to try and make sure we are doing what we can policy-wise to ensure that, you know, we don't skip so close to the edge of the cliff.
Yeah, the copy of your policies are in appendixy and you'll see in some of those there are references to general fund and utility funds. So there's, some of that is referenced and contemplated. And, I mean, I, what's worth, I agree with everything you said and, you know, particularly going forward, not only to maintain these very important systems, but sooner or later the expectation is you'll need to borrow some money and you've got to be able to demonstrate that the funds can, you know, can support that new level of debt for whatever the purpose is. And that's really what we're trying to build towards is a plan looking forward that addresses all of the capital needs that are required and give you all the information you need to know about what decisions you might need to make as part of the budget.
So my reply to that is just that you can send all those few items from the plan work session to vote into making some of these CTE decisions that, you know, we got feedback, you know, other feedback from the council, I was going to say take time to, you know, this micro CTE designation as well. So that's just a quick feedback, but you know, it's the other things to, give us some money to be back, some promise and then, you know, feedback consideration. And that's, that's all.
Any other questions? Is there any further questions?
I do have a good question. If I'm hearing correctly, the bottom line is we're going to, as we go through this process, there is going to be a push and pull between increasing growth or increasing revenue. We're going to need more money, period. We've got to fix the grid. And so what we're trying to do here through the discussions is figuring out the best way we can fix the grid, going forward, that figure assessment.
I think that's a fair assessment. Making it not going broke, making it so that both of these sustainable standalone systems, not only for every, all your current obligations, but positioning them to be able to take care of those needs going forward. I think sooner you're able to start putting some of those things in place, it has less of a shock on the system, I guess, is how I would look at it.
But to amplify the mayor's point, we can make it something for a political season. I think we have to do a better job of educating our constituents perhaps, so that people can see the reality, because most people understand that if you need to fix something, you have to have the money to pay for it. Things do become political because your pocketbook is political. And so I think there should be an initiative to educate our constituents a little better so that they can see in a snapshot what we've got here. So I would just encourage county management to think about it. I might be able to bring that up.
Any other questions? So that's the whole. Okay, Sean, Mr. Williams, there you go.
I just wanted to, as we're going through this, any questions you can give us? This is a lot of information, none of us are experts, you know, thank universe experts on the overall plan for water sewer, you know, treatment plans or just the general future well-being of our water and sewer system. I guess for me to be comfortable, I would, for our vote, you know, for the overall plan, we'd see a overall plan, not just the financial piece, but also the, be presented by, you know, town staff with the overall, you know, dollars and stuff like that. But what do you typically see with other town governments, how do they navigate this process for anything, we're doing differently, or anything you could recommend for us council members to make, to make decisions on this?
I mean, as we've been putting all of this together, working closely with staff and having sat through a couple of meetings now where you all are addressing these things and other conversations, I think you're doing a lot of very good things. And it all, for us, it all starts with what, what are the capital needs, right? Without that, we don't know what the future is, you know, is going to look like. So getting those capital plans as up to date as possible, both water and wastewater and the general fund for that matter, if you think back to the other meeting. And then we've got something to model, then we have something to layer into the financials and make projections. We've got a lot of good historical financial data from your audits and, and, you know, other outputs from your financial system, we've got your budget, so we're in good shape as it relates to that. And we can, we can look at all of those historical trends. What really is the key starting point for the forward-looking process is what does the capital plan look like? Whether that's a three-year plan, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, that's up to you, right? What are you capable, not capable, what are you willing to sort of bite off and do? But that's a very important part of it. And I, I would imagine talking about sewer, right? We know we've gone from a very large number down to a more manageable number, but those other thirty-some million are out there trying to really nail those down. What are they? When are they needed or when should they be implemented? Because that will have a big impact on what the projections look like, right? If all 30 million happens in two years, that's a very different outcome than if it's spread out, you know, six million a year for five years. So I think particularly for the sewer, what's going to make this a helpful process, I think, is getting a good feel for that other capital list that isn't associated with the lower consent order. That probably is what I envision in trying to move all this forward is going to be a key part of the next steps.
Yeah, and adding to that, certainly from my perspective, I think we need probably help from both Chris and others to figure out, or maybe a couple of scenarios of how we can layer that in.
Right, so if you could do all the 35 billion dollar projects, what's it from outside that you can't, exactly what it is now? If the budget wasn't a constraint, how fast could you layer those in? You can't do all of them, it would be impossible, right? So what's the most reasonable but aggressive strategy in that, maybe what's if they pair that back, maybe have more to scenarios and move a little bit more slowly? And then you have something to model and make decisions. I have no idea what the projects are or what the initial, or maybe we could go in and how fast we can do that. I think we need, you guys need to help us have a couple of scenarios. The most advisable, that's still achievable, and then a few slower nations, some of the things to start the conversation, does that make sense?
I, I think it makes sense if we ask our town management to put together that process for us. I agree with Mr. Williams and I agree with Mr. Larson with the unique plan. But the proper way to go about it is to task town management and staff with that as opposed to asking to vote and to crank that out. So that hopefully we can get all of that as we go forward. Is that possible in this, this topic?
Before she answers that, I was going to say, in that same respect, I don't think that we need yet another plan, we need our CIP to have that information in it. That is the plan, the CIP is the legal government process for basing in capital improvement to us, whether it's sewer plan or plan whatever. And so truly, I don't know that we should be adding a new document to a plethora of other planning aspects are out there, but having within, in our capital improvement last year, when robust in documentation. So as we now are doing with consent order and the mandate versus the armament and breaking that 35 million dollars out, and some of it will, our CIP goes five years, some of that will be reflected from five-year aspect and then there may be need to be an asterisk. So five years after that, there's still 29 million dollars of needs. And as we start to, like, chop out an apple, we get there. But five years from now, I would say we'll come up here and we'll sell BKA.
Understood.
So I just wanted to say, like, I just don't want to get another planning document that we can, I want to make sure that gets reflected in the CIP. And drive, you know, it's just going to be the drive next year, you know, that is supposed to be the core of the planning process, of the whole new planning mission, the council and all that.
I certainly didn't mean to insinuate that you're starting from scratch, I don't think you are. I think a lot of that is out there, it's about updating it for amounts and timing and mind-tuning and so.
I, I think what the council is, or at least a couple of us here are saying, is that, and the CIP process was far more robust this year, absolutely. However, a few, one more document would give some specificity to what you feel comfortable with in regards to, but in the other perhaps the CIP are kind of not the plan, is that a fair assessment?
I don't mind the most likely scenario or the one that you recommend being the one that we put in the CIP, but I think it's going to be an initiation. I doubt that when Grayson and staff, which in both his help, come up with that, here's what we want to do and the order we want to do it, and we're like, that's great, we can do it, right? Or probably an area where if you want to start from the CIP, I think it makes a lot of sense, I have your view on that. So, yeah, I think all of the clues they're bringing here.
Yeah, and that still is a valuable and living document that will have opportunities to negotiate on.
Yep.
Yeah, and a process associated with it at times, that helps to get a timeline and things and opportunities.
I'm worried about that, so. We don't know how it's going to turn out, but looking at what you provided tonight, it seems pretty clear that we're going to be looking at increases, I think, to be able to fully defend those. We need to understand the expense side too, the need of the detail, the fantasy, there's no detail in the expenses. I think we'll want to be able to be comfortable that we can at least put an eye on that and continue to make sure that, you know, see the opportunities to pare back on the expense side. Their detail is not going to help with that. I don't know how we address that. That's going to be, we're going to have to, but what you do about that expense, those will have to work out.
Yeah, and we certainly can work with staff to show more detail of the various components of that and what they've been historically, so you can understand what, what the key drivers of that growth have been.
I'm not expecting my climate down there, but we need to, sorry for any of that, ready for this as well.
Any other feedback at this time, Sean?
Yeah, just as a, some dates or some urgency, I guess, to this list. So just remember, this is CIP only, but we all want to have our consent order made by 2028, right? So we do need some decisions, but there's also this reimbursable amount. And most of those need to be completed, all of them need to be completed by October 2026, right? And these are, it's a little confusing because there are two costs here, right? You have CIP, but then you have the consent order and those that are DEQ ARPA that are reimbursable. And so there's some crossover from DEQ ARPA onto the consent. And so what we've done on page twenty is essentially saying if you want to use ARPA to pay for the projects that are due by October 2026, so we can then be reimbursed ARPA money again, so we can put that towards future CIP, while taking through account, we need to finish all the consent items by 2028. So just important things to keep in mind as we go through this process.
Would there be an objection to, or is it helpful to staff to have, just specifically addressing the consent order items and ARPA plans that are eligible for reimbursement, to have a resolution to benefit and board on those items? I don't know that that particular point is a negotiation. And so just to get that out of the way of all of the rest of the pieces, moving pieces of this, because that's one of, you know, that's the way it all ends.
That's why you make the big money.
I don't think anybody better stop, I don't know.
I thought everyone would be.
I know, I'm just making sure, even I don't know, I know. So I just want to see some feedback on that. If staff were to bring that piece back, maybe we have a bigger discussion on moving pieces. And then, I mean, even at that total work session, we know what the dollar rounds are, we know the progress, we know what people accept. If we have that list and those numbers, we could have that, that resolution in place for them, because one of the other things that's happening as we ask for reimbursement, they're going to want to know that we have approved that. So we can't get reimbursed for 3.7 million dollars if we don't have.
So we can't get reimbursed for three point seven million dollars if we don't have that piece in place. Which is again, to do, it's going to, to money, uh, money that we're not bringing for stall, and you're listening to that. Is there any, is that okay? Uh, I'm gonna put that on the October, you guys can definitely.
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest if we can see whatever was presented to the E Q, that convinced them, you know, whatever details they have, whatever the council can do, or something, to help us make a quick decision. You're talking about the details to the consent order, to whatever, to, 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 we have the.
The list of projects?
Yeah, consent projects.
Sure.
I'm sure, it's something that could be suggested, so whatever details we can, I'm sure that the council can make a very quick decision, but at least have the information.
Sure, we have the list of projects, yes.
Yeah, detail. Details presented to the E Q, whatever was presented to them, maybe they'll say yes to the project, the council will pass some information.
You're talking about the specific discussion that was held with the E Q, or just the finalized projects?
Whatever information was coming in.
Okay, the information on the projects, yes, we can provide.
I think there used to be a shared one called, one of the E Q stuff, and however, if you remember. Anyway, you know, we gave.
Oh, look.
It's been a long time since I looked through that, but I think that whole.
I think it was D E Q. I think it was just.
The work for a simple drainage product, the engineering, do you need a report and stuff like that? Kind of something that had that.
Yeah, that was just the I and I stuff, it wasn't, that was before D.
I know.
Yeah. I was gonna say D U, yeah. I remember when they came and did the thing. It was like twenty-twenty-one.
All right, can I have a feedback on that?
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I want to next up is, uh, public.
We just have one sign up, Ms. Kathy Baughman.
All right, well, first of all, I understand that we don't have all these things, therefore, it's not a shame, because we stand at the podium, and we're going to be, we're getting an address, and we contact these provider information. This part, major comments, the whole, not really, did you directly, Kathy? You're, now there, uh, briefly, your position provided back, you may provide written statements, according to your two different work divisions, as well as town manager. Um, we don't debate, but we will follow comments provided by the town managers, be clearly, as we want to hear what you have today. And, uh, you have five minutes, and I'm happy to answer those questions, and if you represent the number, he may waste to identify the number that we recruit. Um, I would tell, I suppose, we need to stay as accountable, continue to initiate and dialogue, and collaboration on items. All right, welcome. Wow, water and sewer, something to follow up on. Kathy Baughman, fifteen along with my same lane, and I'm here at the African Union Foundation to talk, to give you just a quick update on our festival, as we're getting. Uh, this was our second annual Martin X Beach Festival, we need this year was two days. We did two days to, and we'll put the chamber in this year to help drive a little bit more tourism, and more revenue for our restaurants and our lodging facilities. And I think we had a little bit of success there. A hundred percent of the profits from this event, including our raffle, as well as the festival event, has, um, go right back into the community. This year, the, um, Together We Thrive, which will, um, had a five thousand dollar winner. The bigger winner was twelve thousand five hundred that will be given to scholarships this year, in the two-two-four-four-three area. Um, the festival is projected, and we're hoping on target to make about thirty thousand dollars at the end of the day, we're still counting and adding and subtracting. And then we had a fifty-fifty at the event, which made about twenty-four hundred. The winner on Saturday was kind enough to give this back, and that will be going to kids going to four each. A lot of people, it takes a lot of people to make this happen, and I wanted to give a special thank, thanks to some of our volunteers that are here. Adam, thank you once again. Adam Mans, the marketing over at Riverboat, Riverboat does donate that land to us, and that money goes back into our funds. Um, Councilman Morrison, thank you so much for your time, not only at the event, but at W W P R, who broadcasted live. Uh, Lisa Grant, staff, thank you for your time there. And Robin, as always, we've always had the pleasure of the mayor welcoming the attendees, and why that's really important. We all take for granted how accessible the mayor is in a small town. But given just our, the people who take the tents, forty percent of the people who come to this event are from outside of two-two-four-four-three. So it's pretty exciting for them to be greeted and welcomed by the mayor. We, we have volunteers, hundreds a day at the event. What a gearing communities we have, and we couldn't do it without them. We also have great support from our sponsors, little businesses. We had forty-four sponsors this year, um, ranging from two-hundred twenty-three at the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar grant that founded at the festival, up to a five thousand of the corporate sponsor, and in between, six ninety-five to a thousand dollars. So we're projecting to do about twenty thousand sponsors that run. They are generous people. Guests, Saturday, we averaged about, we had four hundred and twenty guests, and on Sunday, we had three hundred and fifty guests. So overall, not only was it fun, but I think it was successful, and I thank our community, and we look forward to continuing this in eighth annual. We will, responding this week, I'm thinking back, what could we do better? Um, we've asked our old partners, the Chamber, to look at that as well. And we'll be meeting with the town on some, that we would have for better support. I would all of it, so I'd like to thank, and it was right up top that I didn't. Chris, your team that kept it nice and clean throughout the day, thank you public works. And, um, chief, your, your guys, who really did feel safe, so thank you so much, that is very much appreciated. That was it, and it was nice, and nice to find you, thank you. See you later.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna first public comment, I got a big block. And we're gonna keep moving right along, uh, the twenty-twenty-six legislative agenda, that is, uh, all up from our last meeting, where we just started the, to open up, looking at what the twenty-twenty-six items could be, because, um, the reality of the legislation starts discussion committees, so it's all, so we're really, they don't wanna wait until, uh, the year. You want that? Go ahead, kind of pick a way.
All right, next one, thank you. So remember, at our last meeting, we were gonna go over what we did last year for legislative agenda. And kind of the homework that we gave in council was to submit to us how your priorities are moving forward in the future, and for this legislative agenda. So you all were gracious enough to send us your priorities, and with those priorities, I put together this very raw list. This is strictly just a list of all the priorities that were sent to me, and I cleaned up, so it made a little more sense. Overall, there's thirteen priorities, right? And I had to combine a few that made sense to combine. So let's go through some of these. So we have funding to support critical improvements, so this is our wastewater treatment plant. B is gonna be, uh, community infrastructure, sidewalks, crosswalks, streets, roadways. C is going to be, uh, projects focused on erosion control, soil resilience, climate adaptation, and so on. We have broadband access, we have protections against shooting in certain areas of town. We have funding towards the new municipal center, we turn on the next page, going to G. We have a local map for B dot web extension projects. H would be school or management upgrades. I is gonna be support for affordable housing, J, economic development, downtown revitalization. K, this will be, uh, revising the required local match formula for small communities. This goes towards the school, I believe. L would be, uh, new initiatives for healthcare in town, and M is going to be grant match waivers for central colleges. So as I look through this list, we have thirteen. My opinion is a few too many, but I think there's a way that we can work around these, but also have discussion on kind of a roadmap of which of these were most submitted by council, right? How many of you had the same, and what are the priorities? So if I look at my list, we had seven priorities that had more than one council member submit to me. So the number one was A. All of you put wastewater treatment plan was your, was on your list of priorities, which is super important, and I think it's granted to be on there. We also have C, which had six of you on there. H had three, J had three, K had three, V had two, and the latter two. The rest had one goal. And so as we move forward this process, we'll be a little ahead of schedule of what we've done in previous years. And so I think from staff's perspective, we wanna kind of condense this list, so we can put it into a more beautiful document, give a little detail, so we can submit these as part of our portfolio to our legislators. And so I'd kind of like to open up the discussion at this point, to talk through some of these. Um, and what was yours, talk about which one do you find important, which ones do you want more information on? And maybe those who submitted can provide kind of what they were thinking as far as details, and maybe we can cut some of these, or combine some of these.
Okay, so, um, before, I want to do this question, I wanna ask a couple of questions related to that. When you do a legislative priority list, and you actually go, you know, to visit and contact your, or, or the C, or the, um, and contact your representatives there, and, and work with them, respond with these, they are the fire that work actively to go through, or to take action on it, um, at their level, documentation of the items. And a report is a one pager that has clearly, has the item clearly defined, and then it is supporting documentation, so um, engineering reports, safety plans, things like that. Um, if you're going for a grant request, it would be, uh, supported, uh, indicate your grant request, they, they do that thing as well. Um, so I have a kind of question for staff, if we can, are there ones that stick on this list that are ready, keep going to the legislature documentation wise? Like which ones are, you know, have the supporting documents that you need to, um, go for? Because I just, one of the items that I might get lost, I think, obviously every item that's on here, it says, people see a need for it. Um, so none of them are not needed, you know, where, that all are needed. Uh, but which ones are compared?
Right, so I, I would say, we haven't had those discussions internally, just because these were your priorities, but with that said, we always look, or let's say, we always look for project ready, or projects that they can go and go after, right? So when I look at wastewater treatment plan, I think that's a very strong one to go after, because we have a need of it, where it needs to be done as far as consent order, for this larger list of projects, thirty-five million, at least, eventually. And so those are direct projects that we can send for our legislators, saying, legislation wise, you know, giving healthcare here in the town, there's not much we, the town can do to bring in healthcare, right? It's gonna be a private entity, it's gonna be, it's literally, we can make it easier for them to something. But that's gonna be more of a policy on legislature trying to push people to come to town. So as we look at the list, um, like I said, I haven't spoken to staff about which ones we think are ready to go, but wastewater treatment plan, that makes sense. We have a resiliency plan, we know that North Shore is coming up, and we're gonna be funding for the actual construction of that. And I know there's grants out there, but asking for money to help with that project makes sense as well. Um, if we have specific projects for sidewalks, crosswalks, and roadways, which we always had a need for, that makes sense, ask for, we're giving that money to go towards those specific projects.
I think we have two of those, right, on the sidewalk, our relations, birthday, A, and it's right out of there. And we're working with the broadband council now, about the B item. The protections, the honey protection is the doc, the doc hunting issue, so I'm, I, 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 it's a service that's broad, it's if we, like, allow people to hunt in town. That's not true. Um, but the reason why I don't know this is because there was actually a request from our state senator, that if we provided a supportive document to him, that he would take, um, protecting level A, which has been a very controversial issue when people have seen. Uh, we know the municipal center, they're on a roll, I'm just kind of going to work quickly, some of the things that might have association with them. Uh, the B, that's why essentially we're having for this, still, that's required. Funding, and that's, that's kind of, kind of, it's not, um, written out for it. The stormwater management is H and C, or R?
Yes, I have a little notice, but we could combine those. I would say, which is more of an I and I, kind of type of projects, but yes, I think we could combine those if council so chose.
So H and C could be one, and the I and I could be N A, along with W W T P, because things sewer, the entire system. Not just, that, that, that system, that's how the legislator wants to identify, will go back to that kind of funding.
More, those kinds of are wrong.
No, yeah, I like to, 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 to.
We, we'll clean it up, even more, just want to hear from you all. Which ones are gonna be priorities, and which ones are not?
I'm getting to that point, hold on. Okay, funding for affordable housing, uh, funding for economic development, towards the initiatives. Um, and there probably is some form of that with the Main Street program, as far as documentation wise. Uh, and we are, we're thinking we're gonna plan on that right now. Uh, we've got, we've, we've got a required local match formula, this is also, uh, this is a regional aspect, most of them are, and that is concerned the L R A. Local required match formula, some of the data are rising with the school cost, we know, people looking at our budget, it's been a massive amount. Um, also, one of our legislators reached out to us to see our input on that topic. Uh, and, um, healthcare opportunities, uh, that's it, and also our comprehensive plan, those as well, that is identified. And expanded access to grant match waivers. I don't know, you know, what the legislative part of, um, more specific of that. So we can, I'll, open it up some more in special, any of those items, but ultimately, what we're to do tonight is have a little exercise where you guys got two sheets of paper? Uh, I just, I'll cut me some paper for my kid's notebook. And, um, and we, uh, just put down six items each, and in front of the, what I wrote before, for the, for six people, you know, put item C. Um, we didn't have this whole list, so we just have the things that we were saying. So now that we have the whole list in front of us, maybe we can just tally up, find a, uh, narrative, because we're in with the list. And, um, you know, with E from down six, we would get an idea of where they're starting to fall in place. Do you want to check in? Yeah, cause right from the letter, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, or M, six of them, all those people, if they were, um, you have to write your name, or they're not, it's not a need. And, um, we'll take a minute, think about it, read them, ask questions, whatever you want to do, just like, uh, you know, post your questions.
Are we even for our, is our show?
Not a care, well, there is, it's no priority, just the six, the six you would fit, if you had a big set.
We're now in a discussion, are you just?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm just trying to kind of carry down, sort of, I have about thirteen items for four hours.
I would like to first one of like more information before I pick. I think, I think it's actually from our, well, we used earlier this week that. If you weren't just to make decisions, right? Um, is that the case?
Or what are we discussing?
Yeah. Then next week we can try and larger program.
Well, we're looking at this guy since down, so staff knows here's our top seven. So this is what would like to be on our list. And then we can go into looking at the projects that we have, we'll go straight to go. We can look at the best direction of call to present these to our legislators.
And I would say H, if H and C could be combined, just put C. So I mean, for everybody. I feel like them separate only because I think there is an item in mind that is more planning development related. But I think that if I made the list, we could uh, expand it, you know, for having that support economic development. I, I get your point, I think I've seen the whole, for specifically the number for now, David, we'll still get more detail about it. You agree with them? I know, I think that's Miss Brown, okay.
Four, two.
I just grabbed you, but. And I didn't put who's going to overwhelm and they have a different time to. If it comes to the discovery, I have this, there was, where your head. And I was like, I didn't. Yeah, see that.
See these ones for your benefit. She's sure of writing about this one.
Yeah.
I give it six, you're. Okay, so the results of the poll. Um, actually seems to be a pretty clear like break bar in this. I'm one of the people sort of hoping for, but they put up the cap on that. Uh, so it is, and it breaks right at, uh. So there are four or five candidates that are very clearly, you know, six or seven complete council support. Uh, and those are A, B, C, and J. And um, to expand it further, I think we could work on J to say things that support economic development, which they also include affordable housing, right? Uh, we can have that discussion separately than this, but J is definitely there. Uh, so A, B, C, D, oh no, A, B, C, and J. Now the break is at D. D is the next runner up if we were to, this is a beauty contest of legislative priorities. Um, D has uh, four, so you got Jordy there, um, that selected that on your list. And it is a clear demarcation, nothing else after that, everything else after that is one, two. So, um, I would say one, three, and that was F. So, uh, I guess the sort of, as we lead into this section, and we want to recall of carrying this into a reasonable, viable, and feasible list to take to our legislators. I think there is just a very, very clear A, B, C, and J list, core list right there. Now that we can uh, go from that, is there consensus that A, B, C, and J are definitely make a cut at four? And then we can start to talk about what are your priorities. Yeah, A, oh, A had seven, B had six, C had seven, D had six. So we're all six sevens, you know.
Where are any of these zero?
Yes. But I also think when we're parenting down, zeros, ones, and twos are all, you don't have any majority of that as items. So. In the interest of time, and eight thirty at nine, and on our list, that's five or six, I think, wrong. And when you got council director, it's kind of out of that. So D is four. And J at four, which is then after the list, after that you're getting three. That's what sort of council. Obviously, there are people that voted for, you know, I'm not a whole, but if you voted for one that didn't make that cut, but it's been, having priority lists is for staff to forward. I feel about, you want to just, they were the six and sevens, or you want to include the tiered and B yet?
Um, just. Uh, just for transparency, I don't know, we say what my, my picks were. I picked A, which is the funding critical infrastructure and treatment. So it was wastewater treatment plan, B was uh, infrastructure projects. And then I also picked, I didn't get those four, but that was healthcare initiatives. And I also picked the C, H, which was the erosion control and uh, H, uh, for people. Those, well, the age, we were quick in six, right?
Yes, H and C, I think everybody you have a stance on, you want to combine it. We think we took the vote without understanding. Yeah.
So far just the healthcare, that's one of them. There's how many healthcare?
Three.
Honestly, if we make the healthcare over that, you can, it's going to make that so make that people. And then that gives us what, five or six?
So it's either four items, if we stick with the six and sevens. Which is A, B, C, and J. If we add uh, the four, then we get B and L with it. Um, you know, I remember that, so.
I'm not sure much on here. And uh, say K is probably one of the most important ones we have as a small community, because that's what we're biggest, but. So I think our legislators put some effort into that, say we cut out, you know, thirty to thirty-five percent of our budget each time. It's a very powerful thing for our community.
I hear you on the balance.
If we're talking money here is to save money, save money every year in our school system. If they could reevaluate it, it goes cheaper for us. And that saves us money for the long haul, not just this year's legislative agenda, it's every year after this. So you're saying K, correct? Yes, sir.
We got an advocate for K.
So we.
Stop her. Uh, yeah, I'm kidding, um, so.
Ultimately, we don't want more than six, do we?
Or as many as you'd like.
I understand, but it's.
How many take less? I don't have a specific number, right, okay, I can't say ten, the numbers.
Is six unwieldy?
Just because it doesn't pick the list, it not means staff will not go fight for grants for sure. Projects we won't spend here prioritizing these other priorities we have to make the legislative agenda.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I don't know, just a lot of sides on the comp plan, it's not meaning that we're not doing them. This is just the legislative school, we're going to work with our, work our very hard for our. Yeah, that's really.
This is my personal opinion. Having a small list makes us look like we're not focused and, and serious about certain objects. So my opinion is to keep it small. I think that's what we did, um, early on when India first introduced this process. It gave them four, three or four things that we sat on, we actually successfully got. I'm not sure if that has anything to do with COVID, can you put it up against that? Either way, it becomes successful, so that's why we did this. And I like the idea of our friends there, um, all of those towns that come back and shows that they have good projects for each one of those. More successful possibly, if it was something.
To me, that's fine, even though I have certainly supported a lot of items being on the list and, and, you know, continue to, will continue to advocate for all thirteen of the items that are on the list, but aren't on the list or not. Um, I, I know it has been more powerful, we're working with state senators and representatives to know there is full council support when I vote with them. Um, not just me, but Natasha and collaborate. They want to know that too. They want to work on things, but they know they can get them for you. You're not going to reverse courts on them or not follow through with the effort that they have put on the line for the things that you have asked them for. And um, so in that respect, I am kind of leaning towards having more items, which does cut some of these other things out, but does emphasize the point. And just sticking with the, the items that got six and seven votes, because that to me said that though we're, you know, collaboratively, we're in unison or that. And being in unison towards this particular agenda, a lot of other things were not real. But being in unison on this is powerful. And we don't want to lose that power, it's asking us how we got the party to set that big play. We were all aware of that. And so we're just trying to get at that.
I had a, some way to.
Yeah.
Vice versa, okay. So that one feels a little maybe be in that grass move or policy change. Something that is so many legislators, we don't, there's no follow up. And I think while not everybody voted for it in their top six, I don't think there's anybody in this council that would like to see that. Local match percentage get down where it used to be. So. I think it's important that it end from our perspective, it's easy. I would say they have to fight for it, they have to help and do, they do the thing they have to do, just help. And then by not asking for money, right, like it's just not a, I need money to go fix something. It's, it's not just affecting us, it's affecting other small areas that have this local match that are putting a big burden on the budget. So if they can provide some relief, and again, it's a policy change, it's not a, then make sure funds out and say, hey, let's change this policy to make it easier for them, that may be a little bit more viewed or swallowed than all the other ones. But we're not seeing.
Yeah, to, to that point, that actually requested, um, column is not, um, very helpful with us because they all say sponsor, support, so there's no weakness in that column. But the reality is items E and item K are just uh, support items. They're not actually asking for fun. And we did in India's choir, we were able to say a policy, I don't like that. And sometimes we were requested, I knew on the cigarette tax board, we were asked by the owner of the vet, um, planning district to support that legislative action because of the, the board policy that needed to happen. And we did do that, we did add it to our list, and then we didn't ask for money from anybody. It was just kind of like the whole encompass, a unit to the, um, that policy initiative. So I can see your point on K, and I, I think it's a valid point. It could be kind of disorganizing right under that sense, that it's just, it is not a funds request like the other top six, seven, I, you know, I'm saying that A, B, C, J, you know, category is, uh, it is a policy stance.
So in your opinion, it's doesn't, it's not required to be part of the list?
No, I think it should be on the list, but it's easier to put it on the list because it's not, we're not going to, it's a, we can use to carve out something in your budget for it. Well, yes, we are in some ways because I'm just, for reasons, but we're not, it's not like a grant request.
Okay, then the same goes for, for the medical facility as well.
Right.
So.
Well, the, this is funding. This is funding annual initiatives to expand healthcare opportunities in small towns. So we are asking for funding, we're supporting the state funding, the small town healthcare. So we are asking for funding, supporting the state funding the small town healthcare, is that what that?
Yeah, I, my thought would be, and I I wanna see if some regions have it, but it's one of the, said, the folks. Um, I see as much value in the medical facility, as in the funding, I don't disagree with that. But we we either go, if we're all gonna support it, okay, we have to support the top four, but that's what we're gonna do. If we're gonna start adding the fifth, then it makes a lot of sense to add the sixth, no make sense?
Alright, so I think I'm tracking, do you wanna see, alright, so at this point, I'm saying, I think there is kind of a diversion here in decision making. It is either for the top four, or for six or seven, right? And let's just kind of break that decision out with leave, we're gonna kind of go down a rabbit hole, whether or not, right? Okay, so you guys backing with me? Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna do that as kind of an informal thing, just letting you know whether you're tracking more towards the top four or you're tracking more towards the six, seven, but.
Okay, top four, but uh, if we're gonna horseplay, we're gonna horseplay. So I would prefer to stay with the top four.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, okay. 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 Okay, uh, that's it, okay.
There's your.
Oh. See, you can do it. I don't know. Yeah, I see what you did, I see what you did. Uh, I'm gonna track for the the six, seven, for the the cigarette list, because, and I'm gonna say who paying, and hopefully we all can be happy and support that. And I say that because I do think of the the healthcare option, the healthcare is important in our community and, you know, I gotta see where that goes. That's kind of a question mark to me, I don't know where that's gonna go, but I kind of like to deal with, see what happens to it. So, um, I'm for A, so I think, so I just to raise the tie on that, now we're in the discussion, is it, who we have staff in board with presenting a legislative agenda that includes an office for people, we're all clear on it. Items A, B, C, D, A, and L, J, K, and L, sorry, I haven't had, J, A, and L. And, um.
Oh, that's seven.
L, thank you. A, B, C, D, J, K, and L, they don't have to be in priority on the agenda, on the legislative agenda.
Where did B come from?
B was four, four, had four votes, and we tried, we got L to four, and so that's where we were, I thought we were kind of.
Ready to sell seven.
And you were. The vice mayor had a made of this stuff.
And he has support and then organized support, okay, that would have been.
Because of how we were going from the beginning. That was only the, it still hasn't joined the council. So that's when the healthcare, the thing, what John had three, we came four, and then also we came by D. That's where I thought that whole, that that was how the healthcare became, went from three to four.
I personally think so, it's just.
Okay, but then if we're going to, because the line of demarcation is four, right? So consequently, and either way, that gets us to a decision, okay? But if one four gets in, all three four, does that make sense?
That's, yeah, that's what I was, that was the math I was using, but I wanted to say the broadband thing of the, you know, and we didn't talk about that much, so I think probably right, my thinking, I'm expecting to have four of those, those that are already, you know, there was already kind of a lot of support there. But we are already working with the broadband government, we are already an initiative to ask the legislative systems on that. It is documented, and we have a plan in place, and there's research currently, that is kind of a part of legislative item, whether or not, so it doesn't make the list, like, does that tell the broadband, you know, it's all. I mean, I don't know, so that's kind of why I would have said it.
Let me, let me reiterate what I said, um, I find it, I mean, I prefer four of lots of, they don't have to, you do seven.
Down there. Yeah, but I think if you can confirm, with K, you had a question, how many could become less, and how many were successful in the whole, it's all team. We had the irony thing, we had ten, we had, um, broadband, thousand six thousand, the L R N thing, I know, which is what, you know, the vice mayor brought up. I would, that has not been a policy change yet, but that is a discussion currently happening right now. And so if you want to weigh in on that, if we, if we, if we as a council are weighing in on that, sort of, like, now's the time, I just say timing wise, but there is something. That wouldn't have happened last year anyway, even though it was on, it wouldn't have, does that make sense?
Is that a legislative, I don't know, just a council sending a letter saying, oh, please support.
It said, um, so one of the things that may happen in that item is if we as a council adopt this as a legislative priority with the L R N. There is a subcommittee that discusses fiscal funding formulas, and they could call on the mayor, Porter Beach, to present to the subcommittee the impacts that the L R N has on small communities and how we're gonna achieve and deal with that. That would be the plan, the next step that would happen. That would hold.
And now we've got two votes today, or one?
It's it's on the tailfolding, drivers, like mayor. I keep going for the other button, but, um.
Well, I will point out that when we started this legislative thing back four, whatever years ago, I was the one that wrote the program.
We had consents on seven.
Alright, we do?
Okay.
Alright, is there all in favor for the seven, they look definitely moving on? All say aye?
Aye.
And there any nays? Alright, you got it?
Just a bit wrong. A, B, C, D.
J, K.
Okay, C is paired with H.
Correct. Alright, and we're gonna have something to adopt in October would be rates. Alright, everybody, P P T R A, everyone came away, this is every year, the.
I promise this will get easier than last week.
So before you, there's, about the yearly personal property tax rule. So every year, we get a set amount of money from the state, and we have to allocate that monthly. So, here's the six section. Everybody gets vehicles under twenty thousand dollars, or the first five thousand dollars of assessment. Gets personal property tax rate. Okay? As you see, on the ballot last year, for F I twenty-five, next year twenty-four, our personal property assessment was thirty-nine million, two eighty-one point one. That was a projection of. Eight fifty-two, three twenty-five, seven oh three, with a tax rate of thirty-one point one oh five percent. As of nine eight, we have eight seven point eight eight percent. This year, our tax value went up to thirty-nine million, five seventeen, six hundred, that is an increase of less than one percent. Our projected tax rate for this year is thirty point six six zero. The town received two, two hundred forty thousand, three sixteen, seventy-six from the states, which is, uh, we had seven thousand nine hundred and six thousand, thirty excess. They're gonna add to that because of the payments. And then to make the numbers work, the town contributed five thousand, one point excess, for a total P P T R A amount of two hundred forty-eight thousand, two twenty-eight, forty-two.
Any questions?
You got a motion?
Still move.
Have a second hand? All of them say aye?
Aye, aye.
Any votes?
That was a little.
Uh, this is, uh, every year is a state mandate, the P P T R A tax rate, we still have control of the numbers, it's just, we have to approve it in order for them to do the thing.
I'm usually, I'm used to the, from the discussion part.
Oh, I'm sorry, I figured, I figured you were well aware of of this one.
I did have a question that I proposed to the county manager, assistant county manager, and he, um, I'm trying to remember what it was, now I think it was, if it was unchanged from last year. So last year, the rate was a little bit higher, because we had less vehicles that were assessed at a lower rate, so the money might have moved a bit further. This year, property assessments are being, so the money got allocated to less vehicles. So we're collecting about the same rate, but, um. No, we're collecting our projections, a lot lower than last year. Rejection? Yes. So last year, you projected we were gonna collect eight hundred fifty, two thousand, three twenty-three, seventy-eight, and a hundred percent collection rate. We actually collected eight forty-seven, five twenty-two, thirty-nine, as of nine eight. This year, we're projecting to collect seven forty-two, more than I sixty-one, sorry, I'm live now, so. Okay, I just wanted to check them out, thank you, I'll, I'll go ahead and move this.
Alright, alright, let me, that would be it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright. Yeah, alright, so I think it was unanimous, though, everybody else was in the vote, so, or, yeah, thank you, Adam. Alright, I knew you were making a press line up.
I was.
Okay, next up, also, is that you also, Adam?
It is.
Okay, I'm gonna, you know, authorization to collect the thing, the language, personal property tax rule, actually already approved, but now we need to request a public hearing because we are gonna have to approve the.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent, the.
Which is collected by tax, we don't ever see the line, it'll come to us, tax collects directly from the customer, it's just a way for tax, so we need a resolution for to do that.
Is there administrative fees for our, okay. I think all we're doing on this is setting a public hearing, but the actual meeting, is that correct? Alright, so consensus is set the public hearing, the actual meeting.
Regular meeting?
It's always way lower than the regular. Yes, again, all in favor of that? Aye, any votes? Alright, so our regular work session, have we got that?
Regular meeting, work session.
The public hearing, at the work session.
Okay.
And then the regular meeting, well, we'll probably. Does it go?
Great.
Is it brown or black? Thank God for sticking around.
Always. Alright, last, yeah. Very senior. A little background on the party stuff, right? So in twenty twenty-two, council directed for parts master plan to be created. In twenty twenty-three, that plan were adopted, parts master plan was adopted, and there were two hundred point five thousand dollars sent toward the new Azalea park. So what we have to prepare, we looked at the parts master plan, so if you look at what's in our parts master plan, page sixty-one, sixty-two, it talks about some of the features that would be in the concept plan, right? So we're looking at a maritime theme, we're looking at a pirate ship, we're looking at pirate coastal theme. So next page, in preparation, we put together a solicitation with the concept plan and the master plan. And this is the scheduled events that took place, and we took in solicitations. So this was released in Friday, June sixth, we had free proposal meeting for anybody who wanted to come ask questions, see the site, you know, talked to myself, Chris Rotti, and get a better feeling of what we were asking for in the project. Now, on Wednesday, you know, and we had a deadline to submit questions, all questions that were submitted were then shared to the Eva site, so anybody who wanted to, um, submit their bid, we have answers to the same exact questions. So nobody adding side information, there was no one that shared it to anybody else, that everybody did not already. Bid for dealing, I outlined to the beginning, here in that. Which we found to tie on specialist. As they had the most amount. And since that time, we worked with them to provide two hundred point five thousand dollars, so we worked with them. Their plan, they put together, if we work with the scale back, it will give them a budget of pallets that we buy from the council. Alright, so looks forward, I'm looking at the long. But the short part, right, it's maritime theme, the theme, we have that swing playground. We've got a single post swing set. Keep going. Keep going, this is where the images. We have climbing feature there on the left, that's a more climbing up feature from the playground to the climbing feature itself. And as you can see, the, the pirate ship theme is, uh, most, we've got plank, you've got little cannons, you've got things kids can play with, or all the shit with multiple slides. You keep going. Keep going. This would kind of be the aerial view of the footprint of the park. So there'd be a walkway area that would come from Stratford and Azalea Street. There'd be two benches, two trajectory spectacles. And a sign that says welcome to take your part. As you can see there, we have the, the actual playground area, which has the time of each chairs and shift, this one set. So what, what was the final cost? We'll have, we're next week. So this sheet here kind of goes through everything that's available. So this will include, um, construction, this will include the actual playground set itself. Public works will be put in a different kind of framework on the land. Uh, six, seven. And the total that we were able to give the town to was two hundred eighty one, two hundred twenty two thousand. And that's the time for. And so tonight, we're asking, we want to show you the final design, the design that I submitted. We want to show you that we kept it within budget. And now we've got to use actual permission and approval to go work with. Playground sessions, insurance group.
Okay, can I get a, a motion and a second hand? Alright, now we'll be open for discussion and discussion.
What is the, uh, time frame of completion? It's very long. So right now, as they look at their schedule, they think we're getting this submitted, all contracts signed, I think it's starting December. Um, and they're looking at, um, the actual timeline, having to go back to the notes, but I think it's not the taxes date. Can I play with the buffer too? And then I can't play with it.
You started thinking about it a little suspicious.
Or however, that, that, there was an infant swing, so it would have been, I think that means much more of a sculptor, people have siblings. Um, um, on that point.
We also, we also discussed the, the council wanted a huge swing. Be built more into the park itself, so it would be set up that way. So that, one of their proposals had given equipment, residents wanted to go, count the kids when they were, had, had different features that obviously we could not afford. Park itself will be built, so there's room for future growth if you choose.
Okay, so there is, motion and votes or any other? Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, any votes?
Yeah.
Can I just, just going through it? And this bottom line is part of the mass, this two twenty two, there's no tweaking, because like I saw here, the, um, the track set goals. They're saying, um, seventeen fifteen. But when I get some sort of others comparable to those track channels from, at night thirty nine. So that's why I was curious if these are part of best numbers, um, prices.
These are typically all from their, their book, if you will, playgrounds, that's just used by their providers. So those are going to be the numbers that they typically use for the specific track games.
Okay. And then on the grand part, where it says that, um, materials people like into our trucks, or the town is sold. Um, our public works, so it'll be, I guess, working in conjunction. As part of it, and will they require them all?
Right.
Okay. So if we're going to be providing for some that, is there any way to reduce that three thousand, or that has stayed at three thousand?
I would assume that is the way, because we're helping.
There's also a twenty thousand, that's. Alright, we do have a vote on the floor, the one that's going to say. Any one?
Uh, anyone?
Okay. Alright, so I think that was the. I can do that, that, fine, too. Okay. Passes and moving forward, the job, I live with the trash, get close to the street.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Okay. Alright, I'll, did you pass the resolution?
I think the motion was to do the.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
Okay. First, I wanted to review the intro section two point two, the twenty seven eleven, any for competition legal counter, again, town council. Regarding this individual matters requiring provision of legal, file, process, council, is our complaint, so with that, I will surrender this section. At eight point seven.
Is there a motion that only public business matters lawfully? Or is there a motion to reconvene?
Uh, so moves.
Okay, well, if ever?
I don't know.
Any hopes? Is there a motion to say that only public business matters lawfully, that it's from a legal requirement, but you can't make that only such public business matters where identify the motion by way of closing was convening what certain stuff would be considered. I agree. I see certified and with that we will adjourn our meeting at nine thirty P M. Thank you everybody for this Wednesday night.